Session, Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
And currently at the dais, we have Councilmember Willie.
Here.
And Councilmember Paul.
Here.
And Mayor Scharf.
Here, and here comes Councilmember Stinks. Great. Okay, so this is a study session regarding below-market rate BMR residential housing mitigation and commercial linkage fee for Cupertino BMR housing program. Application's number CP 201901, applicant's city of Cupertino, location's citywide, and we will receive the staff report.
Yes, so my name's Ben Food, Director of Community Development. With us today, we have a team of experts for you. Eric Phillips up there with you, sitting with you has been our outside counsel on all housing-related items, and we have Sujata Shivasova from the Strategic Economics, who's our consultant on this matter. We also have a housing manager, Carrie Houston, around the site, as well as senior planner, Eric Sorano, here as well. With that, I will hand it to Eric for a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. So tonight, we have a report back from work that your council directed to look for ways of increasing affordable housing and workforce housing production here in the city. I'm going to open with just a quick overview of the city's current program and some of the legal requirements, should you desire to change the program, and then Sujata will spend more time going through the results of the economic feasibility that she and her team have prepared. So to start, we have three main guiding documents here in the city that relate to the city's BMR housing program. The housing element sets the highest level of policy requirements, and it requires at least a 15% onsite requirement for for-sale products as well as for rental housing. The city implements that through a BMR ordinance, which creates zoning requirements in its municipal code to implement that housing element policy, and then it has a housing mitigation manual, which has specific policies for how to apply the city's inclusionary requirements to projects that come forward. And what the BMR program requires is that for new residential development that has seven or more units, 15% of any new units have to be reserved for below-market rate housing. And the ownership side, that includes median and moderate income households, split between 50/50 between that 15%, and for rental units, it's designed to serve very low and low-income units, split 60/40 between the 15% of units that are reserved for affordable housing. There's also a number of alternative compliance mechanisms that are in the city's BMR mitigation manual, but except for projects that have fewer than seven units, some production or donation of land is required. You can only pay a fee in lieu of producing housing units if you have a smaller project. When we talk about these different income categories, I just wanted to put it in context. The median and moderate income households, which are required to be provided in connection with for-sale products, range from $131,000 approximately to almost $158,000 household income per year. The low and very low income households currently are between about $73,000 and almost up to $104,000 per year for a four-person household. So those would be the income categories that are served by these requirements, and that creates either the rent or the for-sale housing price that is required to be provided in connection with that, and that relates to feasibility, as Sujata will explain in just a moment. In addition to that onsite housing requirements that the city has, there was a 2015 NEXUS study that created, allowed the city to create linkage fees that provide housing mitigation fees for projects that are small or that result in a fractional requirement. So for example, if development was required to provide 3.3 units of housing, it would pay the fees shown here for that .3, that fractional requirement for the, and provide the three, otherwise provide the three units onsite. The commercial linkage fees for office and research and development, hotels and retail uses, range from about $12 a square foot up to almost $24 a square foot currently. And as I mentioned, if the city is interested in changing these requirements, there's new laws that apply both to the residential project requirements and then old laws that continue to apply to the non-residential requirements. For the residential projects, because of the BIA versus San Jose California Supreme Court case in 2015, no NEXUS study is required to justify onsite inclusionary requirements for for-sale or rental housing. However, there's a restriction that's related to feasibility. Property owners cannot be denied a fair return opportunity, or the, another way of saying that is that the requirements can't be so high that they confiscate the private property.
So let me interrupt you. So what if the NEXUS, what if we did a NEXUS study, and it showed a much higher linkage fee was required, but it was still, but it's too, it was too high to be feasible? Is it still not allowable to raise it, even though the NEXUS study showed it's necessary?
Yeah, so for the residential, if, for the residential component, the requirement is tied less to the NEXUS and more to the feasibility. If the city imposed requirements that were so high that development weren't possible, that would violate the San Jose holding, even if there were a NEXUS in place.
And who decides the?
Who decides which?
Who decides if it's feasible?
Ultimately, a court would decide if the city had imposed requirements that a developer felt were too high, and they could challenge that, bring a lawsuit, and ask a court to evaluate whether or not the city had adequate justification, or whether its requirements constituted a taking of that developer's property.
Okay, thank you.
The other relevant piece of legislation was adopted in 2017, and that specifically authorized the imposition of rental affordable housing requirements, up to 15%. Beyond that 15%, under certain circumstances, HCD can require the city provide a feasibility study to justify those higher percentage requirements. But again, as we were just talking about, even when it's not required by HCD, having it can help show that you're within the legal limits established by the San Jose case. And then finally, on the non-residential side, there, the NEXUS study is the legal maximum, but again, it's a theoretical legal maximum. The feasibility analysis is used to determine whether property owners still have the opportunity to develop their property, and it's an important part of evaluating where you set your fees. It's not the only consideration, but definitely an important part of that. Those are the big-picture legal points to keep in mind, but I'll leave it there, and Sujata will pick up to go through the actual results of the economic feasibility study that was prepared, that hopefully will inform the next part of your conversation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our economic feasibility study findings and methodology. So to begin with, I think Eric Phillips explained this very well. The commercial linkage NEXUS study from 2015 established the existing commercial linkage fees, or non-residential linkage fees, based on the relationship between the new commercial space, the workers that are employed in that space, and understanding that some of those workers would not be able to afford market-rate rents, then calculates the number of worker households that would have a need for affordable housing, and that's the basis of the maximum commercial NEXUS fee. And the housing, on the housing side, there are existing mitigation fees that were also established through a NEXUS study. The relationship there is a little bit more indirect, where the methodology calculates what the household incomes are of the residents of that new space, how much spending they're putting into the economy, and what that, what types of jobs are created as part, as a relationship of that household spending. Many of those workers are service workers who are unable to afford affordable housing, and so that's how that mitigation fee is calculated, through that NEXUS.
I think you meant unable to afford market-rate housing.
I'm sorry, unable to afford market-rate housing, sorry. So our economic feasibility study is a separate kind of analysis that looks at what the potential would be to change inclusionary requirements, or make other policy decisions, what that impact would be on the feasibility of development. So on the residential side, we were asked to answer the questions about whether increasing inclusionary requirements or the mitigation fees would affect the project's bottom line, and what would be the potential for including extremely low-income housing units in rental projects, as well as the potential for including median and moderate income units in rental projects. On the non-residential side, we were, we structured our analysis to ask, to answer the question about what increase to non-residential linkage fees, what impact that would have for office, R&amp;D, hotel, and retail development projects. So for those that aren't familiar with feasibility analysis, it's a very commonly-used tool for cities to assess the impact of these types of public policy decisions, very often with these BMR requirements, for some of the reasons that Eric already went through. And it analyzes the costs of development in comparison to what you think the revenues would be based on the market conditions, and, you know, subtracting the two to see whether the development generates enough returns for an investment to go ahead. There are some limitations to the analysis. It's structured based on prototypes that are intended to represent the type of development that could happen, but of course, there might be some slight differences in the types of development projects that did move forward that would have different results than what we're modeling. It's also very sensitive to our current assumptions about construction costs, and right now, Bay Area construction costs are among the highest in the world. Also has, you know, assumptions about land prices and rents and sales prices, and if any of those conditions were to change, then the results would also be impacted. So just some limitations to this type of analysis and being able to capture all of the potential changes that could occur. The steps in our analysis are, first, to do research and generate some assumptions about what the development prototypes would be, so what would be the types of projects that would be subject to increased inclusionary requirements or increased fees. The development costs, and that includes land and construction, as well as soft costs, like the city, other city fees, as well as financing. And then we look at newer product to understand what project values and revenues are for development. And then, once we have all that information, we then subtract the value or revenues from the cost to calculate the net value or net revenues, and divide that by development costs. That is, results in a metric that we call return on cost or yield on cost. So we use return on cost as our metric for for-sale product, and yield on cost as our metric for rental product. And this is sort of an industry standard to try to capture what the potential return would be on investment for these types of projects. So moving through the residential BMR analysis, step one, what we did was, we started out with the prototypes from the 2015 NEXUS study to represent both residential and mixed-use for-sale and rental projects. Then we developed some assumptions about what the level of inclusionary requirements would be, what the income targets would be, affordable sales prices and rents for BMR units. This was done using a lot of the income information that Eric already presented, as well as working with Hello Housing to calculate those for-sale, but for-sale and rental rents and prices for BMR units. Then we did a lot of research, which included looking at published data from vendors like CoStar and Redfin, as well as interviewing developers that are active locally and in the Silicon Valley, brokers, and reviewing performers from other projects that we've been working on in the Bay Area. And then, again, tallying the development costs, subtracting the project, subtracting the cost from the project value to calculate the net value, and then that division that I explained earlier to calculate the return. Then we compared that to the minimum thresholds to determine whether something would be feasible, and that threshold was established through some analysis of what we think was possible based on current capitalization rates for development projects in the Bay Area, and I can explain a little bit more about that later if you have questions. So this next slide just provides a little bit more detail about the development prototypes that we studied. They include a detached, single-family product. This would be smaller, single-family projects that, the homes are quite large, but the number of units in the project would be fairly small. We also looked at small-lot, single-family, or townhome product. These are slightly more compact, and also for-sale. And then we looked at three multifamily prototypes that are mixed-use, that include ground-floor commercial space, and that includes the condominium, which is about 35 units per acre in density, lower-density rental apartments, which are about the same density, but are rental rather than for-sale, and then a higher-density rental apartment, which is about 75 units per acre. This is one, a product type that's not enabled in a lot of the city, but we thought it would be important, just in terms of continuity with the NEXUS study, to look at this particular prototype as well. For all of these, we also looked at slight reductions in parking based on either a parking study being done for the condos, or the state density bonus law, which would provide some incentives for projects that are including affordable units. So moving on to our findings, on the ownership prototypes, we found that it would be, as the minimum required return on cost, we established what that would be, that's that top line. So for a single-family detached, it's 10 to 15%, and for the small-lot, townhouse, and condominiums, it's 18 to 20%. And we found that it would be feasible to increase the inclusionary to up to 20%. At 25%, we found that that would no longer be feasible. We also found that the mitigation fee, or in lieu fee, is also feasible for all of these product types. On the rental, we found that increasing the inclusionary rate would not be feasible based on the minimum required yield on cost, which we established as minimum is 4.75%. That is about half a percentage point higher than the current capitalization rate, which is 4%. So I think probably considered a pretty conservative estimate of what a required return would be for this product type. So we did not feel that, under current market conditions, that it would be financially feasible to increase that requirement. We also did some research on peer cities. This is, these are cities in proximity to Cupertino, and looked at what their current inclusionary requirements were, as well as their housing mitigation fees, and found that Cupertino sits sort of within the range of what many other existing cities are implementing currently, although of course, that could change, as some cities are looking at their inclusionary policies as well. So moving on to non-residential. Our non-residential prototypes included office R&amp;D, and that was really intended to represent a Class A office speculative building that would be potentially a multi-tenant building or a single-tenant building, but not necessarily built for any specific corporate tenant. The hotel prototype is meant to be a select-service, upscale business hotel, much like the kinds of hotels that you're seeing in Cupertino. And then the retail was a smaller neighborhood retail shopping center. So on the R&amp;D office feasibility, we found that the current linkage fee is feasible, and we, you could feasibly increase the linkage fee up to $25 per square foot. That gives you a return of six, of over 6%, which we established as our threshold for feasibility. It's possible you could go a little bit higher than that, so you know, we, the $30 per square foot is just slightly under that feasibility threshold. So we, we would recommend something between the $25 to $30 range in terms of feasibility. On the hotel feasibility, we found that, again, the current linkage fee was financially feasible, and could potentially go up to somewhere close to $15 per square foot. At $15, it's marginally feasible with a return of just under our threshold of 7.5%. And then on retail, we found that single-format retail, single-use retail was challenging, partly because of current land costs and construction costs relative to the revenues that can be generated from lower-density retail. We do, however, find that a lot of the retail that is being developed in Cupertino and in surrounding cities tends to be in a mixed-use format, and as I mentioned before, we did look at residential mixed-use projects as part of the residential study, which found that you could implement the current linkage fee if it were being accompanied by other higher-revenue generating uses like residential, and it's possible that this could also be the case for office. Again, we looked at linkage fees in our peer cities, and found that in many cities, the linkage fees tend to range for, depends a lot on what type of use, but for office, R&amp;D, and medical office, they tend to be in the range of between $15 to $25. There are some outliers there, but for the most part, they are in that range. Many cities establish hotel and retail linkage fees slightly lower. This is partially because of other economic development objectives that cities may have, and as well as the feasibility outcomes. So hotel tends to be, you know, under $15 per square foot for most cities, and retail tends to be quite a bit lower as well. So in terms of conclusions, our key takeaways are that ownership units could support an increase of the inclusionary requirement of up to 20%. You could also increase the housing mitigation fees for those product types, but we did not find that lower-density and higher-density rental apartments would be able to support something over 15%. That's just because of the high construction costs for these types of projects relative to the revenues that can be gained. And if you were to increase any of these residential prototype, any of the residential requirements to 25%, that would not be feasible. In lieu fees could be increased for all the prototypes, except for the lower-density apartments. On the non-residential side, we found that for office and R&amp;D linkage fees, they could be increased somewhere close to $30 per square foot, between 25 and 30. For hotel uses, they could support the current linkage fee, and an increase to $15 per square foot is marginally feasible. And then finally, for standalone retail uses, we did not find that they were financially feasible to increase, and that the best opportunities for retail would be when developed in conjunction with office or residential. Thank you.
Okay, you done? Okay, before we bring it back to council, I have one speaker card, Jean Bedord. Oh, is there another speaker card there, Madam City Clerk?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am here to express my concern about the increase in these linkage fees. I know it's politically expedient, but when I look at the numbers, to me, they're killing the golden goose. First of all, these numbers are based on 2015 figures. It's now 2019, and we all know that costs have gone up a lot in that time period. Secondly, I see that rental housing is not feasible at higher rates. If you are truly pro-housing, you should consider lowering those fees to encourage building more residential units. And keep in mind that increasing these fees means that you increase the cost of any market-level units that are built in the city. I'm also very concerned about the impact on retail, and the fact that it's not feasible at current levels. You have just rezoned Valco to 37 acres of retail. That, these fees and development costs mean no project is economically viable on that site. If you are truly serious about housing, then you should either hold to these current levels or lower them. And if you want retail, eliminate the fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue, Madam City Attorney, can you comment on the residents' claim that Valco was rezoned to 37 acres of retail?
The, the Valco site previously said any development was subject for a specific, subject to a specific plan. It had a housing allocation, it had a minimum retail component. The city council still said that we need a specific plan to develop the remainder of the site that is no longer subject to the residential allocation, so any specific plan that would be considered economic feasibility would be a component of that specific plan as it's moved forward.
It was just my understanding at the last meeting that we took it from 100% retail and then rezoned 13.1 acres to housing?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I just didn't understand the statement that we rezoned Valco to 37 acres of retail. I don't think that's quite accurate. Next, Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
Good evening, City Council. I will say that I enjoy going to a lot of these meetings. I went to the Housing Commission meeting when they first did the feasibility study information, and very, very good presentation. And I think this was again at the Planning Commission, I'm getting to hang out here too much, and now we're doing it City Council. And I actually saw something on TV recently where they were talking about a feasibility study, and I thought, oh, wow, I know what that is. So I consider a lot of the things free education. It's, it's adult night school. I mean, you learn, the audience is learning a lot of stuff, so you guys spend money on feasibility studies, and the audience, if they participate actively, they learn a lot. I mean, I, I just commend everyone. I think that in this point, obviously, I've always been very glad that Cupertino had a BMR program. They were one of the first cities to have one. And I will say that there is always a need for BMR rental. You have, yes, homeownership is great, but when you have families in transition flux, you have divorces, you have domestic crises, you have seniors that need housing, having the city have a pool of ready-to-go BMR rental that is based on income, you may have people coming from going into single-family, you know, some, a single parent with several children, maybe they were coming out of a house where there were different relatives and the household broke up. So I think it's always important to have a good pool of BMR rental. I don't know if anybody ever came across that before, but I have become a student of watching all this, and I think it's a really good thing to have. I now know what a linkage fee is. I was confused, because it sounded like something you'd hook a trailer up to a car with, but it's basically in lieu fees, and I knew what those were, because I hang out at the city functions. I will say, one of the issues is, I'm not a fan of reducing I will say, one of the issues is, I'm not a fan of reducing any parking requirements anywhere in the city. We are setting ourselves up for future problems by reducing parking. And I mean, I plan to stay in Cupertino as a senior, an active senior, and I don't want it to be a hassle to try to go downtown and go shopping. It is already a hassle now because our retail has taken a big hit, but we've got another thirty-five to forty years to put retail back. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna reduce parking. Also, when new people are coming into the city, especially, we're gonna have BMR rental coming in, we need to realize that we need, those new people need vital city resources. That means we need new gas stations, pharmacies, grocery stores, healthcare, hospitals.
Okay, please finish up.
And parks, because when we have new people coming in, they need new services. So the people here aren't giving up their services to serve the other people.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, there's no more public comment cards. We can bring it back to council. I just had one question. When you're doing the feasibility, how do you factor in the land cost? Is it the current value of the land, is it the amount that the property owner paid for the land? And are we obligated to say, well, you, somebody, you paid too much for the land, and now we have to lower our fees in order to compensate so you can still get a positive return? How does that work?
We look at market value, and that's established not on a, based on a single transaction, but multiple transactions. We also look at it based on different kinds of entitlements. So in areas that are zoned for lower density, you will often see that the land values are lower than in areas that are zoned for higher intensity. So we also look at, when we're looking at comparable land sales, we, we make an effort to try to understand whether that parcel was in an area that was zoned for higher-density multifamily, if we're trying to make it, if we're trying to compare it to multifamily land prices. So we do research multiple transactions in Cupertino and also in surrounding cities to be able to get a better underst, understanding.
So, actually, I have one more. So in response to one resident's comment, I mean, would it be a good idea to lower the retail fees just to try to encourage more retail? Does any city ever do lowering like that?
We'll, we'll put up the comparison slide for the, the linkage fee in, in peer cities. That some, some cities do have lower retail fees, and some with weaker markets actually will reduce the fee all the way down to zero to try and encourage that sort of development.
Right, I mean, I mean, we are lower than Palo Alto or San Francisco, or I guess that's all we're lower than, but we're higher, oh, and Los Altos, but we're higher than a lot of other cities. Okay, thank you.
Our hotel is about on par with other cities, but half of Palo Alto.
Yeah, our hotel's a little low, that's true.
Palo Alto has surprisingly high for retail. The Mountain View has very low retail fee. And for us, we have the same for hotel and residential, hotel and retail.
Right, so maybe, yeah, maybe though, we need to adjust those in opposite directions. Okay, yeah, that's all I have. John, do you want to go next?
The first one is just a minor point, and then I'll go into the more important. So under the residential BMR program slides, on the third slide where you kind of had the prototypes, and I got a little bit confused there. I like to kind of be on top of the numbers, and so if I take like that first column, up, no, not that one, the one with the table of prototypes, the third slide under residential BMR. There you go, whoops, you passed it. So column number one, dwelling units per acre. So the way I would kind of interpret this, so you've got four and a half units on an acre, and then I see this parking down there at twenty-eight. And so I'm, I'm a bit confused there. Four and a half units, two cars per unit, would be about nine or ten spots, so I'm not quite sure where this other parking comes into play. And then it gets even worse in the second column there, where all of a sudden it jumps up to a hundred and forty. If that's per acre, you know, how else do I interpret this?
Yeah, and part of, Sue Jota will give you the specific numbers in one second, but part of that, the dwelling units per acre is the density that corresponds with that prototype, but the prototypes assumed more than one acre would be developed. So the, the total unit count is different than the dwelling units per acre on this chart.
Right, so if you were to, and I apologize, it's, it should have, it would have been easier for you to understand it if you saw the actual number of units and parcel size associated with each prototype. But for the detached, single-family prototype, that was, that, there were seven units total. And so the parking requirement is four per unit, and then I think some additional parking spaces. And then on the prototype two, that's actually fifty units total. And prototypes three, four, and five are hundred unit totals. That's just to have a nice round number. It's not necessarily because you would have a hundred-unit project specifically in those areas. So we wanted to show you the densities and kind of the, the general type of project in these, this prototype table, but it doesn't tell you exactly how many units we were assuming for the purposes of our analysis.
Yeah, I, I seriously think to be able to take this and use, use the numbers in thinking about it, either number one, we have to know how many acres are in the analysis, or we need to normalize it and take the parking that would in fact correspond to the four point five dwelling units per acre, we'd have to normalize it. We can't have apples and oranges.
Well, I guess the, the difference there is that there's a different parking requirement that's applicable to each of the different prototypes. So, for example, the, the seven units of detached, single-family has a higher parking requirement, so the, the twenty-eight spaces that are being associated with that correspond to the zoning code requirement for parking spaces. When you compare that to the higher-density product types, the code has lower parking requirements, and then a density bonus project allows further reduction beyond the code requirement. So you're right, it's not exactly apples to apples, but that, it's because it follows the code requirements based on the different product types.
Okay. So then, from there I go, if you can help clarify a little bit, so the linkage fees, so if a project like Marina is, or the Hamptons, and it's all housing, and it meets the fifteen percent, then there's no linkage fees? Is that correct?
Correct. So the linkage fees apply to the non-residential component, so a purely residential project that's providing onsite wouldn't have additional affordability requirements.
Right. So then, if we were to take the Hamptons, then they fully met the fifteen percent BMR requirement for the city? Is it right to assume that?
I'll ask staff to say the exact percentages. The, the Hamptons was approved before, as a rental project, bef, when the Palmer case was still in place. So the city was precluded from applying its standard fifteen percent rental inclusionary requirement at that time. So through the development agreement, a separate onsite inclusionary requirement for the rental housing was negotiated. So it has a mix of low, very low, and even some moderate-income housing.
And because Marina preceded the Hamptons, same, same issue there?
That's, that's correct.
So, that being said, when, when we look at Veranda and how much contribution the city had to do in order to get, you know, the BMR-type units, it seems like, you know, getting a linkage fee is dramatically away from truly getting units that we would be able to have in our community for BMR. I'm kind of asking, am I correct in that? I mean, if we get this twenty-five dollars per square foot and this many square feet, and then we come up, but when we have the Veranda where it took a city contribution of somewhere between three and five million dollars for the units there.
Yeah, so the, the advantage of having an onsite production requirement is that you tend to get your units faster. They're produced onsite and in connection with new market rate development. When you're looking at a linkage fee applied to commercial development, you don't have the same opportunity to require residential development because it's, it's just a commercial development. So there, the fees do help to contribute to projects like the Veranda. If you were to convert, right now in the city, the in lieu fee for residential projects is only applicable to small projects if you're developing six or fewer housing units or have one of those fractional units. But if you were to convert to an all-fee program, for example, you would potentially lose out on that project-by-project affordability. And then the trade-off is that you could contribute to a project like Veranda where you have the opportunity to get much deeper affordability because you can combine with other subsidy sources, even though it takes longer and it's, depends on your pipeline and land availability about how much actual units you'd be able to produce.
So if the linkage fee only applies to the smaller projects, so then for larger projects, then they are required. But wait a minute, we have housing, we have retail, we have office. And so if it was housing like at Westport, then, okay, the, you know, they're pretty much comfortable. But if it's heavily office or retail where there isn't already housing, then the linkage fee is still available to them? I mean, are they able to ask for that in lieu of?
In a mixed-use development scenario, each use type has to comply with the requirement that's applicable to that use type. So the residential component has to meet the onsite production requirements or an alternative. If there's fewer than six units in that mixed-use project, then it could pay a fee for, for the residential component. Otherwise, it has to do the city's standard requirements. And then the other mixed-use components of that would pay the linkage fee based on the use category that was being proposed.
Great. So then we get to what I consider to be the, the real focus of, of where I'd be coming from. And that would be trying to get the BMR units attached to each project type. And so if it's a housing project, okay, great, it's pretty much taken care of. If it's retail, strongly encouraging that there be the residential units onsite there, whether they're upstairs, I mean, when we drive down streets, we definitely see retail and housing above it. The one down on Lori and Stevens Creek where, you know, I live, I see the housing units above the retail. So for the developer then to be able to go and do his project, you know, to encourage that there would be a requirement for the housing needed for that type of, of project, if it was ten units or twelve units, and they include those units. Now why, you know, I'm going in this direction because if they put those housing units, you know, above the retail, then for the most part, the, the land cost gets negated, you know, because it's already there. And I would go so far as to say that if we were to encourage them to take advantage, on Stevens Creek, we have the forty-five feet or sixty if there's ground-floor retail. So again, if we were to encourage them to say, okay, that, that sixty feet with ground-floor retail, no, that sixty feet going from forty-five to sixty is for housing, for the BMR unit. And again, the, the, the land cost is negated because it's already there, whether it's forty-five feet, and then say, well, they want to go to sixty feet, and they have to include an amount of housing that would correspond to the project size. Then you could go to the next one, I'm getting creative here, hotel. Wow, well, what do you do with a hotel? But I would still be thinking that the hotel could clearly have some permanent residences, the first choice being the, the employees of the hotel. I mean, if, if for the particular hotel site, rather than letting them go and pay this linkage fee, that they had to provide, say, four or six living units, and they're, they could have their first choice for the tenants to be their employees. Now that does, I think, in my view, that does exactly what we want, where we want the workers to be able to live close to their job, live in the community, rather than having the hotel, one hundred percent hotel, and these, these workers are now going to commute from Hollister or Gilroy. And so I'm just kind of alerting the rest of the council that I'd like to really be moving in a direction of getting away from a linkage fee and really pushing the development of the housing for each type of development project. And so, phew, I'll leave it at that.
Can we get attorney's opinion if that's legally possible? I support that. Can we, like, for a hotel project, require certain BM, number of BMR units that could be employee-only?
So there's a number of factors that would go into how you would structure that sort of requirement. One thing that other jurisdictions will sometimes do is look to create an incentive structure similar to the way the residential density bonus works. You could offer a commercial density bonus for hotel or retail development like you were describing that was only available in connection with the provision of affordable housing units. And there's, there's definitely good models for how to build a program like that that would speak to some of your underlying desires that you're, or the outcomes that you're looking to promote, as long as the incentives were structured in a way to be attractive and, and overcome the feasibility barriers that the, the market would present to just providing that housing on its own.
So there are examples of cities that have implemented these types of structures. So if you're familiar with the North Bay Shore Plan in, in Mountain View, they have a tiered structure, and for developments that are above a certain density tier, they do have to provide additional affordable units or other types of community benefits. So that's the way that they've been able to exceed the, the minimum requirement through the commercial linkage fee and be able to get more onsite. Housing, in that case, dedication of land is also an option for affordable housing development.
Yeah, the dedication of land, again, it's the true high cost that kind of prevents, but by allowing it to be integrated in, whether or not that's just airspace or, you know, the units that would be there, then you're really just talking about the construction cost, and you've got the offset rent, you know, to how much, how much of a mortgage or borrowed money would it take to simply do the construction and, and be of net balance, which allowed them to build their overall project, possibly a little larger. So then I go back to the, the thing where you said there are municipalities have done something like that. I would be very happy if you could provide a so-called example of something that was actually built. The, the programs are still hard to get my head around in terms of, well, they're gonna charge this much and they're gonna allow that, as opposed to a actual development where here was a, an office building of, you know, sixty thousand square feet, and these number of, you know, three units of below-market-rate units to allow more on that particular site. to allow more on that particular site, you know. So if you could come up with something like that. Just a mere fact of having an example will help me to, you know, kind of keep thinking about this as a possibility. So, thank you.
Okay, Darcy.
Can you go to the slide where you have the BMR requirement on rental? I think it's the fifth slide, maybe? Well, well past the fifth slide. Ah, there we go. So do you have a row where it talks about 15% inclusionary, which is where our current status quo is? Do you have those numbers? So, I mean, just, you know, it's probably not, you know, 100% accurate. But extrapolating, going backwards from 25% to 20%, for example, on the far-right column, you've got higher-density rental. You go from 4.34% to 4.50%. And I would, just based on the information that's in front of us, extrapolate 15% inclusionary to be another 0.16% or so above 20% or 4.66%. But do you have that data available?
The data is in the report on figures 25 and figure 26. But for the apartment prototype four, at 15%, it was, the yield on cost was 4.2%.
Okay, so that's the next-to-last column. So that's prototype four. And then for prototype five?
For prototype five, it was 4.6%. So it was almost at that threshold. We did some sensitivity testing because we know that the results are really dependent on what you're assuming about rents or construction costs being as high as they are right now. And we found that with slight reductions in construction costs for prototype five, if construction costs were 5% lower, that the 15% did become financially feasible. And the same goes with slight increases in rents. A 5% increase in rent would make that prototype feasible as well.
Right, okay. So I'm going to try to write this here. Okay, so we've got 4.2, can't really write a dot, and four.
And 4.6.
Point, and that'll be an arrow, six, right? And so there's a delta between the in-lu fees and 4.2 of about 0.2% on the lower-density rentals. And a delta between the in-lu fees and where we're at right now at 15%, at 4.6% of about 0.16% for the higher-density rentals. So, I mean, I basically get, you know, your justifications and analysis. And I don't think we have time to, you know, kind of go into assumptions and talk about, you know, yield on costs and return on costs and how we come up with those particular numbers that are fair. But I think at the very least, what we can do is examine our in-lu fees and say, well, compared to our 15% numbers here, we're, you know, for this example, for rentals, you're getting a yield on cost of 4.2. Why not calculate what you would need to do to your in-lu fees to match that? Because if you assume that all your assumptions are correct, okay, then at least for that fraction of a home, where the developer has that option of giving the monetary, you know, difference, it would seem logical that we should provide the community with the tan amount economic advantage of what the developer would have gotten, had to pay if they were providing the home itself or that fraction of the home. So could we, you know, in the next iteration, get that number? You know, just at baseline right now, what we would need to raise the in-lu fee for lower-density rentals from the 4.40% impact to make it 4.20? And similarly, from 4.76 to 4.6? And I think the numbers are pretty, well, they're different. Actually, the in-lu fees are different per square foot for each of those types. And I think it's a different way of looking at the economic analysis. But I don't see why it's not legitimate. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you don't necessarily want to create too lopsided of an economic environment where the development community then becomes more and more incentivized to basically say, well, let's get an alternative. Let's just give you an in-lu fee instead. And you do see that happening. And this is without challenging any of the assumptions. Because my initial, you know, having been with this issue for a number of years, and this is probably a half-decade ago, that's true. But my initial understandings were that our in-lu fee would have to be increased quite a bit, you know, to even almost the triple digits, to even get near, you know, what the impact would need to be economically compared to inclusionary zoning. And then my other comment, and it's really more of a question, is when it comes to, for the metric on ownership for residential, you do use the, you use a metric of yield on cost. And so we've got, what am I talking about rental here? Actually, rental is yield on cost and ownership is return on cost. And the commercial and office, I believe, is also yield on cost. So that's more of an apples-to-apples. So my question is, why are the commercial assumptions higher in terms of the yield on cost for the owner or developer there? And I think that would just, you know, it'd help to educate me and, you know, hopefully the public as well as to, you know, what we can possibly push back on with regard to some of these assumptions. Because these assumptions that you're making in terms of percentage yield and, you know, monetary gain, I mean, I think they matter quite a bit because that represents, you know, according to the terms of the analysis, you know, how much potential leeway we have to consider these increases. Now, an increase, I think, from $23 and something cents to $25, I mean, to me, that's, you know, it's not even worth it to really go through the whole exercise of, you know, staff time and everything else that, you know, comes with the political capital of changing your linkage fees for an increase. But if you could have something a little bit more significant and, you know, make it more justified economically and say, hey, look, you know, for example, if you're going to be delivering housing, then it would be this much more expensive. I'm surprised, frankly, that it's that close, you know? You know, when we're talking the difference between 4.2 and 4.4%. But even, you know, let's just assume that those terms are accurate. Please tell us what the monetary differences would be in terms of the difference in the linkage fee, of how we would need to get the baseline to that 4.2% since that's essentially what we're asking the developers for anyway. So that's, those are all my comments. If you come back for another round, I'd really appreciate those justifications as well as the numerical data.
And should I answer the question about the yield on cost?
Oh, like, you know, if you have that answer handy, sure.
So the yield on cost is really a metric that it looks at net operating income. So how much you're getting from the rental revenues minus operating expenses? That's the net operating income, divided by the total development cost or total value of the project. And that is also indexed to what we call capitalization rates. Now, capitalization rates are, or cap rates, are a metric that is basically measuring net operating income divided by the sales value of a particular project. So what we do is we look at published financial data on capitalization rates for different types of products. And they're all different because investors view them a little bit differently. Right now, multifamily rental projects have very low capitalization rates. And that's because we're kind of at a sort of a peak market condition where the ratio between net operating income and the total project value is 4.25%. Or in some places, it's 4%. In San Francisco, it's about 4%. But for office, it's, the capitalization rates are anywhere from 5% to 5.5% depending on where you are and which markets you're in. So we set the yield on cost to be a little bit higher than what the minimum capitalization rate is because that's how most developers and investors look at whether they'd be able to gain a margin over the current value. So what they're doing is basically assuming that over time, that project will gain a little bit in value from current conditions.
I guess my only pushback on that would be, you know, just the immediate pushback would be, you know, we're setting policy and legislation for a particular point in time and your economic analysis is based upon this particular snapshot. So if we can rightly assume that this could affect, you know, economics 10 or 20 years into the future, then why not look at historical ranges? And essentially say, hey, look, you know, the cap rate has hovered between 4% and 8%. And then pick a number that's reasonable within that range. That actually adheres a little bit more to the benefit of the public. So, I mean, I just wonder why we have to be kind of held to this particular snapshot in time as of what people are making right now. I think from a policy perspective, perhaps it makes more sense to look at it from a historical perspective.
Okay, next.
So the staff and the housing commission recommendation doesn't include one category for ELI in our BMR program. And as I remember, the EM, I mean, extremely low-income category, that was in last year's city council work program. I was expecting that we would include that. So I think what I would like to see is when we are, when someone is providing a moderate, let's say, 5% moderate income, then they should be required to provide 5% extremely low income to balance out. That because they can make a little more money on the moderate income, then we can provide the extremely low income. Because the state has a lot of competition for resource and a lot of competition resource for homeless shelters. And that actually has taken away resources for people with developmental disabilities, and these are extremely low income. So I think we would like, I hope to see that we are including that category in our program.
One request for clarification is, so the study did look at what would happen if extremely low-income units were required in addition to the current 15% in a rental project and concluded that that increase wouldn't be feasible. But what I heard you say, and I want to make sure I understood, was that potentially you would like to have the staff look at a change in the rental unit mix rather than being very low and low income, potentially have it be made up of extremely low income and moderate. And that might lead to a different feasibility outcome.
So, yeah, so the total percentage would still be 15. But if, when we provide a certain percentage for moderate income, we provide a similar percentage for extremely low income? That make sense?
Yeah, and I would add, even if we had to go to 10% because it was ELI, that might be something that we would consider as well, instead of 15. I mean, we don't like to go from 15 to 10, but if we have to do it to get some ELI units, maybe we would.
Yeah, maybe provide some flexibility that if they provide this much moderate income, we can, they should be required to provide this much ELI. I don't know in terms of economic analysis whether it would be the same percentage or some ratio. Okay, so, and then what I would like to know, it's interesting that you are recommending about $25 for office, $25 per square foot for office. And it's about the same, like $23 something for multifamily rental apartment. But then I saw the market value for office is a lot higher and the office rent has gone up a lot. It's, so I did some calculation. Let's say if you have a thousand-square-foot unit rental apartment, and the rent would be maybe $3,000. And then, but then if it were a thousand-square-foot office space, the rent would be about $5,000 per month. And that's maybe two years ago, maybe $7,000 a month. So how come the, you think it won't be feasible if we charge more than $25 per square foot? I don't know. How do you get that number?
So some of that has to do with the parking requirements that are associated with different types of uses. And the parking ratios are quite a bit higher for office than they are for multifamily rental. So if you had a thousand square feet of office, I believe, you would need to provide a much higher ratio per thousand. Whereas if you had a two-bedroom apartment, you wouldn't necessarily need to provide the same ratio. And I don't know the exact ratios offhand. So that's one of it, is that you have to provide a lot more parking, which increases the cost of office development. And then there are, I think that there are other factors in terms of the amount of density that is enabled on a site for residential versus office that also contributes to the overall economics of it.
So that means if we have an office project that requests a reduction in parking through TDM program, we should charge more fee, linkage fee, because?
I think that goes to sort of the types of incentives that are sometimes offered in order for office uses to be able to contribute more towards certain types of community benefits. So as I was saying earlier about other examples like the North Bay Shore Plan, they do enable office that is going up above a certain FAR and they do have a TDM strategy. They do require them to provide additional affordable housing in exchange for that increase in intensity.
So one of the peer review comment was, they asked, where did you get your data for the performa analysis? And then your response was, you send out some queries and voluntarily, the developers in Cupertino, around the Cupertino, give you their data. So that means, one of them include San Hill. And so that means the data they provide to us may or may not be accurate. And there is a conflict of interest, actually, in the data you use because it's to their best interest to underestimate their potential revenue, right? So how much confidence we can have in your numbers?
We, so the question was actually about who we interviewed, but our data is actually coming from many different places. We look at published data. We also look at actual rents in existing apartment projects. And we look at sales values based on actual sales to determine the revenue number. So we don't really just take someone's word for what they think that their rents or sales prices would be. We actually look at other published data sources for that. And we do the same thing on the cost side. There actually have been, it's an interesting time in the Bay Area where a lot of people are doing cost of development studies. San Jose has been doing a slew of studies on what the cost of development is for different types of residential types. And we do a lot of work around the Silicon Valley. So we've also been able to work with other communities and collect other data from other places that supplement this as well. So we're not asking, you know, we're not really copying anybody's specific performa. We're just gathering a lot of information to then establish assumptions that we think are reasonable.
Okay, so for example, for housing, we are able to require onsite BMR units. Let's say if it's 100 units of housing on a site, and if we require 15%, 15 units would be BMR. And the construction cost per unit is 500,000 square foot per unit. And then that comes up to about $7.5 million in construction cost and plus the land. So that means if we get onsite BMR, we get $7.5 million of value for those 15 BMR units plus land. And use Veranda, for example. It's about 19 units and about $12 million. So $7.5 million plus land, maybe $5 million. So that is about right. But if this were in-lu fee and at $23.75 per square foot for either residential or commercial for 1,000 square foot, that, then that means it comes to, I think, $2.3 million. So $12 million in value if it were onsite. But 2. something in value if it were in-lu fee. And then if it were commercial development. And then if it were commercial development, very locked, very profitable, more profitable than multifamily unit, but then they are only required to provide two point three million dollars in linkage fee. And you are telling me this is all they can afford? Otherwise, the project won't be feasible? I don't trust the number. This doesn't make sense. If a multifamily unit, multifamily apartment can afford to provide us fifteen units BMR at the value of twelve million dollars, how come office development of the same size can only afford two point three million dollars? Otherwise, not feasible.
So perhaps I can go back to the, I'm, I'm not sure if you were looking at the rental prototypes or the ownership prototypes, but the values on the, on those different prototypes is quite different. For the rental, we actually found that the fifteen percent inclusionary is challenging for them to provide. And so that was one of the findings. But we did think that with reductions and potential reductions in construction costs, that the fifteen percent could be possible, especially for the higher density rental, which is coming closer to being feasible at fifteen percent inclusionary. The ownership, the ownership side performs a lot better because the values on a per square foot basis are extremely high and on a per unit basis. As you all know, the median home values in Cupertino are very, very high. And that's true for many jurisdictions in which we work, that the ownership prototypes can more easily bear the inclusionary requirement than the rental prototypes. It's also because they're lower density construction types and those tend to be cheaper to build than the higher intensity.
Okay.
Where you're doing podium parking, so when you're doing a concrete podium and you're having to accommodate at a higher density, you're actually, the cost of, of building those types of units is much, much higher than it is for a single family home.
So ownership unit, we could potentially require a higher percentage. But my question was really about office.
Right.
Office should be much more profitable and your numbers don't seem to...
Our analysis shows that office is, is profitable and, and can contribute up to twenty-five dollars, maybe up to thirty dollars per square foot in commercial linkage fees. There are other types of fees on, on commercial development. But no, we did not find that it could exceed that level based on, on current rents. It's possible that office rents will increase, but in fact, what we found as we looked at the market data was that Cupertino's office rents are not as high as some of the neighboring jurisdictions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You have anything else? Because we're almost out of time.
Okay.
Hey, Rod?
Thank you. So I, I appreciated that you had, that staff had this peer reviewed. And I have a question on that. So Lazar did the peer review and their comment was, I don't see how to connect the dots from A to B to C. Strategic went back and modified the report, right? And, and the result of that is now in our exhibit C, I guess, right? Did Lazar come back then and take a look again and say, yeah, we think, we, we see how the dots were connected? Did we get a report from Lazar saying that they thought this was cogent? And I'm asking because, you know, I'm interested in ensuring whatever changes we make are defensible, right? I'm interested in making sure that we're not, we wouldn't take any capricious action.
Yes, that second round of review hasn't occurred yet.
Okay.
The, the report was revised and we thought, spoke to the concerns that were raised or responded to the questions, but haven't done a second round.
I mean, for my part, I'd, I'd be interested in having Lazar say, okay, yeah, we agree, we get this now or, you know, get to a point where we have a consensus between the two economics consultants. I think this is making these determinations, there are so many variables and the models are complicated. Having a peer review, I think, was a terrific initiative on staff's part. I want to ask a little bit about Class B office space. So those buildings that sit, yes, along Bub or some on Stevens Creek that are not particularly loved because, by major employers because they're not the shiniest, classiest office spaces, right? And my question is, if somebody comes in and does a major refurb and then a startup or a mid-sized company moves into that space, is there any linkage fee required? Or does linkage fee only come into play when there's, you know, the building is, isn't only gutted, but where, you know, new walls and things, exterior structures are put up? Can you talk about when these linkage fees kick in?
Well, in some ways, it's a policy choice for the, the city. They are related to the amount of employment that's generated. So to the extent that a substantial rehabilitation increases the amount of employees and that changes the, the linkage, there could be an opportunity to apply those fees to that as well.
Yeah, so I know past councils have talked about this. I know Darcy in particular has talked about the idea of wanting to incent diversity in, in the companies that are here in Cupertino. And Sunnyvale, for example, has a lot more diversity of employment than, than we do. And, I mean, I, I'd certainly be in favor of trying to do what we can to make the city attractive to these small and medium-sized companies that would diversify our economic base. And this isn't something that happens year over year, but in the course of a span of time, right? These buildings that may not constitute great Class A space could be used for, for the smaller companies that I think we'd like to, to have an opportunity to attract. Now with respect to housing, you have charts that compare our linkage fees for other things. Do you have a chart that compares housing between cities?
Yes, and we just put it up here on the screen for you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. And what story does this tell?
Yeah, the most, most jurisdictions are clustered right around the fifteen percent. In part, some are, some are lower actually in, in some markets.
Mm-hmm.
In part, that's because of the way the state laws are required. They create a safe harbor right around fifteen percent. The mix of product type is also, it's similar to what we see here and in Cupertino's current program. There are some jurisdictions that will incorporate, some actually have higher rents. There's only a, a small number of jurisdictions that incorporate the very low income household, income range.
Mm-hmm.
And then we don't really see any jurisdictions that use a rental extremely low income because of the difficulty of making that, that feasible.
Thank you. I, I think given this chart and given frankly where we are in, in a battle that's gone up to the state level on housing, I'm, I'm very hesitant to think that we ought to be increasing demands on folks who would build housing of any type in the city. Fifteen percent clearly looks like it's feasible. And I, and I understand staff report that says we can go to twenty, but if, if I thought we could generate hundreds of units of median and moderate income housing from that, I'd be all for it. But given where we are right now, I think, and, and frankly, the, the football that's being tossed around with our name on it, I would be in favor of, of not imposing additional burdens on those who would build housing for us in the city. So, so that's where I sit tonight. And let's see, were there other questions you were trying to get answered?
I guess we'd put that to staff and see if, are there other specific direction that you'd like from council?
Do we have a consensus on whether we want a higher percentage for ownership housing? Because I, I see that in that chart. And I think Palo Alto, other cities have much higher per square foot in Lufi for ownership, although their percentage is about the same. And you mentioned that there is room for ownership housing. And we do want to provide people, beginner, more, to, to become homeowners. So there is room to provide higher percentage, to, to require higher percentage for ownership?
Yeah, the feasibility results show that it, it is feasible to increase the onsite production requirements for ownership.
Right, but not increase the, not increase the fees because, you know, we, we would like to encourage more...
Yeah, I think the only thing increasing the fees does, right, is, is encourage more onsite, right? I think the strong, what I heard from staff, and this is not new, but over time, the, the biggest tool we have that we lost until we got the Palmer fix back was the ability to compel fifteen percent inclusionary.
Right, but we cannot, we cannot legally charge high enough fees to build the amount of, I mean, we, we can't encourage onsite by raising the fees because the fees would be too high and we'd be challenged. So what the vice mayor said is correct.
And also, so, so one option is possible, a certain type of ownership housing, we can increase the percentage and also mixed use. When it's office by itself, it's hard to require onsite housing. But in a mixed use environment, maybe then if it's part of a mixed use development, we can require higher percentage of onsite BMR housing when they have the certain percentage of office development, for example, then that encourage more onsite BMR.
But, but right now, if it's six units or more, that, it has to be onsite, right?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
But if it's housing, office doesn't have any requirement. So I would like the office development to, instead of paying in Lufi for that two point three million dollars, I would like to see units onsite in a mixed use development. So maybe we can say a mixed use development with a certain percentage of office should provide twenty-five percent of BMR units, something like that.
Right, I mean, I would just like...
If that number works out. I'm just throwing out numbers.
I mean, I think our in-lug fees for office should be as high as we can legally make them.
That's why I'm wondering if that number makes sense. Twenty-five, twenty-three dollars per square foot for office, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like, like, and like Darcy said, if we went to twenty-five, what's, that's not, that's only like, what, eight or nine percent more?
So could the direction to staff be considering higher percentage of BMR for ownership of housing and/or mixed use development under certain conditions that makes sense? That still is feasible for the applicants?
Well, I mean...
To encourage more construction of housing?
But if you increase the percentage for, for sale, isn't the property, I'm going to say, well, then I'm going to do rental?
That's why it needs to make sense.
Okay.
So...
Well, I mean, we're not going to solve this here tonight.
Yeah, so I think the staff can work out the numbers that we don't want to discourage for sale.
Yeah, we'll certainly work with the consultants and come up with some numbers for your consideration.
Yeah. And I, I guess my final thought would be, I would love to see some ways of us incenting, I realize where, we are where we're at. I realize our housing element. I realize our BMR, that's part of that is low and very low, right? And the split that you talked about. I would love to see us figure out a way to get more moderate and median income housing as part of a program, as part of an incentive, as part of something. We need a place for, for government employees at city hall and in our schools to work. We need a place for those teachers. And we're just, we're not generating enough of it. And the problem, right, is our teachers are increasingly saying to us, we can't stand to commute from where we can afford to live. And I think by providing some help to, to those kind of folks, we strengthen our schools, we strengthen our city, and we make it possible for more, to fit more people here. So hopefully my request...
So maybe the extra like five percent could be five percent moderate income housing. That's less of the impact, financial impact on the developer, but we have more...
If, you know, my preference would be to, to levy it on, as you said, we're going to do things, we can do it to office, right? That's a, seems fair. I'd be very cautious about sending a message to everybody listening out there that we're levying more fees on housing in this environment.
Yeah, we don't want...
That's all.
And also hotel, it seems a hotel gets the same fee as retail. Does that make sense? Should we consider that?
I, I hear you. I mean, I could go for that too.
Could the staff also look into that? And sorry, one final question I really want to know is, so we can require them to provide onsite BMR housing for rental and for sale housing units now, but not for commercial and hotel and other type. However, the housing element or the housing bill requires to provide them options. So they have to have options besides providing onsite. What does that mean? What I'm afraid is when we allow option and then a project comes in, say, they might qualify for streamlined. And it might be certified, it might not be, could be a certain condition, the state bill is going that way, projects will be streamlined. When we provide option, could they come and say, okay, that means it's discretionary? Then I don't have to even give you onsite, I can choose in Lufi. I don't, I'm wondering.
So just quickly, so as of, as of now, as, as the mayor pointed out, the in-lug fee is not an option for projects that have seven units or more. So there's, there's no argument that someone can force you to approve that. The other alternatives that are included in the BMR manual include things like land donation or acquisition and rehab of, of other units, things that result in new affordability conditions, even if they're not being provided directly onsite. Other state laws such as density bonus or SB thirty-five, to use those provisions, the applicant has to provide the units onsite. No, no other alternative works under current law for those types of bonuses or, or alternative procedures that developers can use.
I guess I just want to confirm, so the option that we currently provide available for under BM, in BMR menu won't be taken as, oh, that's, that's discretionary approval and they don't have to do either one of those?
Yeah, the, the way that the manual is structured now, it's consistent with what AB fifteen oh five requires for alternatives. And it, yeah, it doesn't provide a path to in, in Lufi that you don't want.
Okay, okay, we're fifteen minutes over, so let's, we can bring this back later. Thank you for, Councilman Paul, for reminding me of that. So I think we can adjourn the study session. And let's take a short break before we move into the regular council meeting. So it's six fifty-nine, let's, we can start at seven oh five.